Good morning and welcome to the July 18th, 2023, meeting of the City of Lakeland Planning and Zoning Board. The Board meets every third Tuesday of the month to review proposals for changing the city's comprehensive plan, its future land use map, zoning changes consistent with the map, and conditional use permits. The Board is made up of seven members appointed by the City Commission and is assisted by the staff of the Community and Economic Development Department and the City Attorney's Office. Staff will advance any presentation slides that should have been provided prior to the meeting. The meeting is divided into two parts. The first part is the public hearing, where we expect to hear new applicants explain their request and receive comments from affected parties. The second part of the meeting is termed "The General Meeting" and primarily consists of acting on recommendations from staff about cases that came up in prior months' meetings. We invite everyone who wishes to participate to be heard. We do ask that you be concise in your comments and that speakers avoid being repetitive. That is, if several people have pointed out traffic concerns, there's no need to hear additional comments regarding traffic again, but we would like to hear anything new that has not been addressed. In order to allow everyone to have the opportunity to speak, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and the clerk has a timer for this purpose. We respectfully ask that you adhere to this rule. We also ask that at this time you silence all mobile devices. Also, when you come up to speak, please provide your name and address. With that, we thank you all for being here, and I'll turn it over to the Secretary Sylvana Knight.
Item number one: Conditional use to allow for a 103-foot-tall personal wireless services facility, or cell tower, on approximately .11 acres located south of Parkway Frontage Road South and west of Beaker Boulevard. Owner: Pipkin Creek Properties LLC, applicant Deborah L. Martehue, and this is the consideration of final decision.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Philip Scares. I'm Principal Planner with Community Economic Development. Start this meeting with a personal wireless service facility. Again, like we mentioned, it's 103 feet tall. It's located the Beaker Boulevard, just south of Beaker Boulevard. This is the entrance to the mall off of Harden Boulevard. Then you have Parkway Frontage here, and then obviously the Parkway. I'll get into one more close-up here. This is the subject site. You can see Beaker Boulevard is right here, kind of where it runs under the Parkway going over to the mall here. You have the entrance as well to the CSX facility, just right in the median area. So the site is located within the large residential planning unit development, started back in 2002. This is the 280-acre parent parcel. You see it in relationship to the site, to their parcel. And then I just want to give you a zoom-out aerial of what we've got going on here. So again, the star is the approximate side of the tower. I'm going to get in a little bit detailed here in a few minutes, and then the applicant also has a detailed presentation as well, but we just wanted to talk about the zoning and the history. So this is Phase One of Lakeside Preserve, and you have Phase Two of Lakeside Preserve on the north side of Lakeside Preserve Boulevard. It started out in 2002 as a mixed-use planning and development, typical of the era with, excuse me, with the golf course, single-family, multifamily development, and also it's a commercial. The PUD was amended back in 2019 to allow the current configuration. There were some previous amendments prior to that, changes of ownership, and the name had changed to Hunter Field. But overall, we have a, now it's, the PUD's modified. We have basically a single-family portion and a multifamily portion. There are still some commercial entitlements, but I believe they used those commercial entitlements when they did some of the multifamily here at the corner of Pipkin Creek and Parkway Frontage Road. So we have single-family here. This is again Phase One. This piece right here, just outside, this was multifamily developments proposed. It's already gone through site plan, and the building permits have been issued. The site is just under preliminary site work right now. And then we're also reviewing Phase Two of Lakeside Preserve, which is a single-family portion. And Phase Two kind of runs along here on this side, and then it kind of swings up and behind the tower, and I'll show you the details in a minute. Oh, and I just want to also point out that there, in addition, there's a large Lakeland electric transmission line that runs through the site. So it basically runs through this adjacent to the single-family portion up here and to the Parkway. But again, I just want to mention that in relationship, we're talking about 103-foot tower, there's also a transmission line with very tall tower poles, utility poles as well, running adjacent to this, to the single-family portion of Phase One and Phase Two. So here is Phase Two of Lakeside Preserve. We have single-family, it's just coming off Lakeside Preserve Boulevard, so we have single-family development here. This is under review right now, and they've requested some modifications. We don't really anticipate any type of plating on Phase Two until maybe this time next year, and that's being conservative, because they have some changes coming through now. But we are reviewing this as construction plan approval right now for this Phase Two. And zooming in a little bit more, our crack GIS staff has superimposed the tower facility that's proposed on the Phase Two map. So we have the tower, the main tower base here, and it is 254 feet away from the closest residential lot line. And it's important to note that this portion of Lakeside Preserve PUD is a conservation area, and there are wetlands that have to remain intact. It serves as that natural buffer to the Phase Two of Lakeside Preserve. But it is meeting the horizontal separation from a lot, which is basically twice the height of the tower, so it's over 206 feet of the base of the tower from the closest residential lot that's proposed in Phase Two. Then you also have the multifamily development right here, which is called PROS, and that's 391 multifamily units proposed here. And then that transmission line is over here to the west, but just want to point that out, that there is, that transmission line exists, and I have an aerial, that I'll show you that. So this is the proposed site plan. That would be adopted if this was with the conditional use permit. You have an access Boulevard and easement coming off Beaker, and like I said, it wrapped around that side. So an access easement basically wraps around where the CSX, comes off the CSX rail here and then wraps around to the back. And I'll let the applicant get more into, you know, the technical aspects of access, but this is an easement, and then this would be the improved drive to the tower base. And again, it's a 103-foot tower with externally-mounted antenna. And I'll let the applicant explain the details of that, but when you have a tower this low, the antennas have to be mounted externally. That can't be internally mounted. And I'll let the applicant get into technical aspects of that, but I just want to point that out. So this is 103-foot with the typical array of antenna, and you can see here that it would support four separate providers, so it does meet the city's co-location criteria. Yeah, so this is looking east on Lakeside Preserve. Just want to show you this. This is that transmission line, and the applicant has some photos, photo simulations of the tower, but they're not showing the tower supports themselves, the utility pole supports themselves. So this is looking right into Phase Two of Lakeside Preserve, and there's a single-family portion here, and then that multifamily is right over there, past the church. But I just want to point this out, you know, you have that major transmission line there with those supports, and then that tower is going to be right in this area, and it's, you know, going to blend in with that, with those existing tower supports. And this is just looking into the site on Beaker Boulevard. There's really not much to take, the site is so large, it's kind of hard to get a good sense, but just standing on Beaker Boulevard at where the CSX rail, when you're looking into the site, I mean, this is like right there. I was out posting the sign that day. Just a little bit of background. This did come through earlier this year, and as a 150-foot mounted pole, notified the Lakeland Airport Authority, and, you know, there were definitely concerns with airport overflight zones. So got the applicant in contact with our aviation staff. They also had conversations with FAA, and after those conversations, that tower, proposed tower height from 150 did come down to 103, what we're dealing with today. And that's the, you know, basically the minimum height that the applicant needs. And this is just showing FAA approval for that determination of no hazard for the airspace. So I'm going to leave it here and switch over and let the applicant give her presentation, and I will stand for any questions from the Board later.
You can tell he's taller than me. Good morning. My name is Deborah Marty. I'm with Marty Hulianus Law, 1036 23rd Avenue, North St. Petersburg, Florida. I'm here today with my client, Tim O'Shaughnessy, with C4 Towers, and the owner, Lee Saunders, of the parent tract, as well as where he pointed out Phase Two, that single-family that's coming through the process. He also owns that. So good morning. First, I want to thank staff. Mr. Scares has been wonderful through this process, has everyone in helping us. Lakeside Preserve is a complicated history, and I really appreciate his presentation to give everybody a good background of what's been going on, because it took me a little bit to figure out with all the amendments the last 20 or so years. So as Philip had pointed out, the overall area is in Lakeside Preserve. We're showing the current aerial, and that the existing, that's built, the existing residential there, we're over almost 1,600 feet away from the nearest lot. Again, he already showed you this, so I don't want to repeat. You've got the, well, let me just go back for a second. Just, you can see, our setback requirements are two feet per tower height, so that would be 206 feet. We're not asking for any variances. Our minimum setback that we have is almost 300 feet, so we're well in excess of what the code requires. The height of the monopole is 103, mainly because of that flight path issue. We can design it for four colocations, and the reason, obviously you have co-location requirements, a little bit more specifics about the exterior mounted antennas. There's a lot of issues to explain about that. If you use exterior-mounted antennas, especially when you're at that lower height, we can project the signal out further, get more coverage. You can tilt the antennas better to reach and not overshoot or undershoot, in this case probably undershoot based on all the nearby antenna towers that are much higher than what we're proposing. So you have the flexibility to tilt those antennas a little bit versus if they're wholly concealed in a canister. That's some blockage, you know, it does reduce the signal propagation. And if you use canisters, not only does it affect the ability to tilt, it would reduce our co-location capacity probably to two instead of four, although we would have four canisters, the way 5G is deploying now, they usually have to separate, not in every case, but in most cases currently, they have to separate their radio equipment from the antennas. So they'll occupy two canisters instead of one rad center mount, so that takes us from four to two. Why that's important is we're trying to reduce tower proliferation, the need for more towers in the area. And as it is, we did have to come down from 150, which was proposed. T-Mobile's need is actually 180 feet in this area. We had proposed 150 to try to get them close to what they needed, but respecting the context and the landlord's desires and everything that's going on around it. Then we had to reduce it further. So we're trying to maximize the co-location, and that's why we're proposing the exterior mounts at this height. Of course, it'll be secure, has a security fence, security access gates, the required landscape buffers, and parking. Even though, if you're familiar with towers, once the construction is done, there's usually just quarterly maintenance unless there's a hurricane or a storm and something of an emergency where antennas have to be, you know, put back in place. Let's put it that way. So our nearest residential here, as I mentioned, is 1,594 feet currently, but in Phase Two it will be, I think Philip had said about 254, is that right, Philip? 254. Like I said, the owner of the property, who's here tonight, is also the owner of Phase Two, so he's well aware of what he's proposing, and has no objection, obviously. This is our photo sims. This is our key map. We thought, you know, traditionally, we'll do photo sims from each directional, roughly north, southeast, and west. But in this case, we felt it was more important to show the photo sims from the nearby residential. So counterclockwise, you can see one, and then two is down at that intersection where Philip had shown where the transmission lines were going through, and then three and four. So just kind of go counterclockwise, and you can see. So in number one, you don't even see the tower at all. And number two, you can see it off in the distance, but there's also other utilities that makes it kind of blend. That's the other thing, too, about monopoles. It's a misconception. Monopoles, because they can be slim poles if you exterior-mount, versus if you have to do canisters and put everything in, they're a much thicker pole, so they're actually more visible. Monopoles galvanized tend to blend in with the horizon from a distance. This is the next one. We just didn't capture the big poles. We might modify our photo sims for City Commission to see if we can't show that relationship between the transmission line and the height of the pole above the tree line. But you can see, we captured where those power lines are running, and those are higher than what you actually see of our pole. It's our understanding from Mr. Saunders, who is familiar, obviously, with the property, that those transmission tower poles are over 100 feet in height, as it is out there right now. And view number four, there's no view either. This is our search area. You can see it encompassed more north of the CSX. We couldn't locate a willing landlord in that area, so we're in the southern portion of that search area. And this map, if you, I hope everybody was provided this presentation beforehand, but the closest tower that's existing is over a mile, just over a mile to the southeast. See, it says Crown, 150 feet. That's the closest. All of them are, some of them are close to five miles away. So we diagrammed where all the existing towers are, their height, and their location. So obviously, there are no towers that we can co-locate on within that search area. And the black symbol there in the center is where our proposed site is, and the gray shows that there's no signal. There's really no coverage, just a gap in coverage. The yellow would be in-vehicle, and the green would be in-building. And when that site goes on air, you can see now the connectivity, at least with the in-vehicle, and a large improvement in the in-building coverage, where, again, if we could have gone a little bit higher, you would have seen the merging of the green blobs to give better in-vehicle within the area, but we are limited by aviation. So it does solve a lot of the problems in this area, particularly with more customers coming online in Lakeside Preserve. This will be important for service. Here are your conditional use standards. So with respect to height and visual obtrusiveness, we are surrounded by a heavily wooded area. The conservation area will be in perpetuity. That will not change. It will remain vacant in perpetuity. We discussed it's designed for co-location opportunities, so that will reduce the need for more towers in the future. Doesn't eliminate it, but it does reduce it. And the lower half of the tower is obscured by the existing mature canopy. As we mentioned, if reducing the height any further would reduce the ability to co-locate, because you can't propagate a signal through the trees. You have to have a line of sight, so to speak, for the signals to reach the other towers. The degree of visibility from the public view, we just went through all the photo sims. We are adjacent to the north, to the CSX railroad line, and more commercial to the north. The proximity, we've gone through that, and the residential structures, the character and uses of structures on adjacent nearby properties. Again, we're just a little .11 70 by 70 lease area in a over 282-acre parent tract, so we're a very small, small footprint. And Philip and I have gone through all of the adjacent uses already. The character of the land, again, heavily wooded. It'll be heavily wooded in perpetuity. We have designed this facility to reduce visual obtrusiveness. It may seem counterintuitive that exterior antennas are less obtrusive, but trust me on this, I've been doing this a really, really long time, and things that we used to think would help camouflage, like painting the tower blue on the upper half and green on the lower half, only made it stand out worse. Putting huge flags on these poles only made it stand out worse, particularly at night, because you would have lighting involved, and people wouldn't normally see the pole at night, but now you have a light. If you use unipoles, which I think are appropriate in certain areas, but not this one, considering the existing utilities that are already in the area, and the need to propagate the signal as far as possible, the galvanized finish will blend into the horizon better than a very wide unipole that would be required to house and conceal those antennas. That will actually stick out more, and they tend to be more creamy white, so they'll stick out a little bit more. We've talked about reducing tower proliferation, and the reasonableness of alternatives do not exist. I've shown you the search area. There are no towers or structures of sufficient height that we can mount. We cannot mount on these transmission tower poles. So last, we are allowed in this particular zoning classification PUD, subject to conditional use approval. Designated conservation will remain vacant. We're not asking for any variances. It is an unmanned facility, I'm sure you're aware, so there's no public services or facilities impact. There are no other co-location opportunities available. It will provide much-needed service capacity, and particularly coverage in this area, and we're here to answer any questions, and thank you for your time. Again, we have the owner here, if you have any specific questions for him, and we have the developer here. And I'd like to reserve any time for rebuttal if there is anybody here in opposition.
Do you have any questions for me before I sit down?
Questions on the Board?
I do. I've seen cell towers in other counties that have been camouflaged to actually look like a tree. Is that not a viable thing?
Not in this location. Again, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that solution before, particularly when I've done some trees in the, I've done some trees at this height. They look, while the camouflage branches have improved over the years, it really does stick out, you know, because, again, you have to get your antennas above that tree line for them to be able to propagate the signal. So what you end up having is all these branches sticking way above all the other trees, and that draws your eye. So it's not, I mean, it sounds great in theory, but it's kind of like having the flag that's flying above everything else and lit up. It just draws your eye to it. And I find that that was a very popular solution in the, say, 2000 to 2010, and then even in Palm Beach County, they'll be like, there's a couple that are on I-95, and they run, and go, "Oh my God, I can't believe that we asked for this." They call them toilet They call them toilet brushes in the sky. So, I, I can't in good conscience. I mean, we've done a few on golf courses that are lower in height, and that might have other Norfolk pines around, but you don't have Norfolk pines here, so it would really, really stick out.
I, I'm aware of that.
Yeah.
I saw it in Pinellas County, actually.
Yeah.
So, you know, while I was aware that it was a cell tower, it's like, oh, you know, it's not as crazy-looking as a tower tower. It just looks like a tall tree.
Um, yeah. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would really, i- if you had some other maybe spiked Norfolk pines in the area, I might say maybe, but you don't have that here, and it's been my experience of a be careful what you wish for kind of scenario. I've gone in to some jurisdictions over the years where that's what they really, really wanted, and then we put it up, and they said, "Ugh, oops."
We've got to talk for a second.
Sure.
You have to say your name.
My name's Tim O'Shaughnessy. I'm the owner of C4 Towers.
Address?
1123 Solano Avenue, Wannapark, Florida, 32789. I don't mind building a tree. Trees are just, they do stick out, but you, you answer your question, I don't mind building a tree. That's what gets to the end result of getting approval. It's, there's, I'll show you a picture. They are out of, out of sorts. I mean, when you, the, the mother trees and all those things. This is a 100-foot pole. I typically build 150 to 200-foot poles everywhere. You see these giant poles. We're in the middle of the woods, middle of a conservation. A 100-foot is as much as we can get out there, obviously, and the carriers are okay with, with getting that radiation out there for the cell towers. And the reason why we do a monopole is the amount of equipment we can put on top of a monopole. We can also do it to a tree, although RRUs, all the extra boost that can give us that antenna spray, as you can say, you know. So, I'm a problem with that. I just want to make sure. They do stick out, but it's not a big, I'm looking for an approval.
Yeah.
And, and that, and that would be staff's concern, is having, having a tree that just is atypical of what you have in central Florida.
Just a thought. That's, yeah, and I'm just like, I'm not saying it's not possible. I, I'm just going to go under be careful what you ask for theory, because I've had jurisdictions want that, and then be very unhappy when it gets built. I'm just being honest. I've done all manner of towers and camouflaging techniques. In this particular area, I do believe the monopole is going to be the least visible.
Especially with the power lines.
Yeah.
Power lines, the same, the high source, I got, they got lines running across. Trying to pull up a tree right now for you that I saw.
It's okay. It's all right. Don't worry about it.
Other questions from the board?
I was, one, one question I had is the, the detail of the, the actual access road coming around the west side of the site, adjacent to the Pro's property line. I didn't see any detail on that, and so how would that be located within the 50, 50?
Well, let him, because it's very complicated, this access.
Well, actually, what you saw in the access wasn't the correct access we're going in at. We're actually going through Lakeside Reserve Two to enter to the property, going through leased property, that property, enter leased property, back, so what, what we had in the map was not the way we're going in.
You pulled that slide back up, so we can at least look.
Can I show you something?
Sure. While you're, you've reworked this access many times. Apologize.
Do you want to go back to one of my slides?
Sure. Well, I think I got it on mine, but you tell me. There? A little broader view. Okay.
Yours is might, maybe better.
Okay.
Lee, can you show us how we're coming in on this one?
That's actually correct.
That is correct?
Yeah. Because you reworked it.
Phil, there's a site, yeah, there you go. That's it. That's the correct one.
My question is just related to that, that direct northern portion of the access coming off the cul-de-sac, and how that would be designed and, and fit within that 15-foot easement area.
At Lee Saunders, 5529 US Highway 98 North, Lakeland, Florida. I represent the owners of Pippen Creek Property. So, Chuck, to answer your question, there's an existing, as part of our plans for Phase Two, there's an existing ingress egress easement there, and it would just be integrated as part of that.
Like a 10-foot-wide gravel?
Yeah, I, I don't know the, I think it's 20, and I don't know what this.
I think your code's 20. Whatever your code is, we meet that at least. It's typically 20 every jurisdiction I go around.
And as far as the construction, I'm sure it would be all, all weather, but I'd have to ask that Tim answer as far as the, I would assume it would be gravel, and then you'll be on a portion.
Stabilized 57 is usually.
Yeah, and then, then the portion that goes east-west is actually the old roadbed, and then from there south to the actual site would again be whatever the stabilized, whatever the load-bearing value would need to be for their, their sized trucks.
We always work with fire on that.
So.
We'll definitely make, meet your code.
Just that it's on the record in my, we always, yeah, we always work with fire when we get to that point, to make sure that we've stabilized the access correctly for whichever jurisdiction. Typically, it's number 57 gravel stabilized.
Okay, and there would be a subsequent, if, if approved, there would be a subsequent site plan review, where fire would have a chance to review that as well.
Yes.
Or they approve.
Yes.
One question I've got, really for staff, yeah, in our, our standards for tower location, there's specified heights. This being a little different because it's in a PUD, where's this fall from a underlying zoning versus height standpoint?
Well, I think, back to the, the setting here, this is a mixed PUD, and the portion where the tower would be located, historically, that was mined for phosphate lands, and this is discussed there, there are a number of environmental constraints there, so it is well buffered, separated from the rest of the development there, and it really has otherwise no probably economic or development value there. So, the code does allow for, you know, for that type of use there, if we go through the process. So, based on the impacts we looked at, we, we believe would be the appropriate location, and we'd be the least impactful in respect to existing and proposed development out there.
As a residential PUD, the, the maximum height would be 75 feet.
If we're conventional zoning, for example, if you had, if they contracted in the middle of a residential neighborhood, 75 feet would be the standard there, unless you had some other type of, you know, unusual condition there, but certainly, I think this would qualify, given the, the large area of land that we're talking about here, and it doesn't meet or exceed the separation requirement for the tower there.
Then, I know that's a little bit unique, too. I think there's a whole section specific to conditional uses for this specific purpose, but traditionally, conditional uses are to the landowner. Is that correct? Is that, how's that working in this situation? It sounds like it's a leased property.
I think, I mean, our typical approach would be is that the conditional use would be for the benefit of a specific entity or company. If it were to change hands, then the Director of Community and Economic Development would have the ability to reassign the conditional use to the new owner, or send it on to the City Commission for action. We've had that happen recently with another, with another conditional use as well. So, the Land Development Code start, it starts with the Community and Economic Development Director, and depending on that person's judgment, it may end up going to the City Commission for formal transfer action.
I have one question. While the owner is fine, the owner of the parcel is, is in agreement, is the developer in agreement, who's going to build the houses back there? And if they're not the same person, is it the same person?
Yeah. For the record, Lee Saunders is the owner of the Phase Two, and he's here, and he's obviously consented, he's leasing the land, he's consented to the application.
And he's the developer of the helms that are going to be built?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that was my question.
Questions from the board?
Just a little, just as additional background to that question, staff didn't receive any calls or emails in opposition.
Do you have anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter?
Elliot Simmons, representing Pro's Lakeland Owner LLC, 200 South Orange, 1575 Orlando, Florida, where the owner's and developers of the 391-unit apartment project just to the west of the access road. I think everyone's done a pretty good job summarizing where the actual access will be from. We're neither for or against a proposal in front of us. The only thing we want to clarify and ask is that the minimum setback for the access road is maintained during the site plan process. So, we've got three buildings on the east side of our property, as you'll see there, so we want to make sure that there's an adequate buffer there between the buildings and the road to access the cell tower. Thank you.
That's where, when I, when I measured off that easement area, I came up with 15 feet, so that's something we would need to evaluate, is exactly what does that envelope look like?
The access road gated, so people just can't walk down there?
Typically, typically, they are. I mean, I would look to the developer to, to confirm. The entrance?
Entrance, the entrance of, of where? The entrance to the tower, or the entrance to the road?
From the public driveway to the site.
So, do you want to, do you want to point to it? It would be off that rock bed where you're coming down into the tower site, correct?
It's gated.
Yeah. That will be gated and the compound secured. Typically, these access roads, again, they're stabilized gravel, and after construction is finished, you're not going to see anybody out there, or like, a vehicle's going to go out there maybe once every three months, unless there's a storm event, or they got to change out equipment, you know, because it went bad. So, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty rare. Obviously, security is a huge issue for my client and any of the carriers that'll be on this pole, so we, we take care of it. Thanks.
Philip Scares, again, Community and Economic Development. Wrap it up. Generally, you know, a conditional use permit is one hearing, and we do have conditions for this to be forwarded to the City Commission. So, it is recommended that the request for conditional use, as described above in Attachment C, be approved with the following conditions. One permitted uses, ground-mounted personal wires, wireless facility cell tower, along with accessory structures, such as equipment shelters and emergency generators. The site plan shall be developed with the, in accordance with the, the attachment C that you've seen here, and that'll be forwarded to the City Commission with that site plan. Again, maximum height of 103 feet. Landscape and buffering shall be provided in accordance with Section 4.5 of the Land Development Code. It's a standard condition. However, this being in the middle of wetlands, I, you know, we probably doubt that we'll have any buffers around the site, since it's already buffered already, in accordance with Section 4.5.10 of the Land Development Code. Existing trees shall be preserved as identified in the landscape plan at the time of site plan review, and all protected species during all phases of the construction of the cell tower. Outdoor lighting and security fence, fencing and signage in accordance with Section 5.18.3 of the Land Development Code. Access prior to the issuance of building permit and access easement agreement shall be executed with, and recorded with Polk County Clerk of Courts to allow for the cross-access between the cell tower and the compound, leased compound site, in substantial accordance with the approved site plan. And again, here is the approved site plan. This is the Attachment C that will be forwarded to the City Commission for their, for their approval. And again, staff does recommend approval.
Who's going to be responsible for maintaining the part of the road that, that wraps around that the gentleman who's with Crow's Nest just mentioned? Is that going to be the lessee?
Would be the agreement between, that, that they work out with that, for that easement. It's more than likely going to be the lessee, since they have to access the tower for maintenance.
Will we take care of the road? Entertained motion?
We approve request subject to the conditions presented by the city.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just approve us.
It may seem so that it's.
Things have happened.
Thank you. Sometimes it takes years to find the right location, so this is those, those circumstances where you do your homework. So, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Okay, item two. Change in zoning from RA4, single-family residential, to O1, low-impact office on approximately .88 acres, located south of East Lane, east of Morel Drive, and north of Parkview Place. Owner, Lakeland Regional Health System. Applicant, Bart Allen, Peterson and Myers, PA, and it's a consideration of final decision.
Good morning, everyone. Audrey McGuire, Senior Planner with Community and Economic Development. So, this is a rezoning request from RA4, which is single-family, to O1 or low-impact office. The property is generally located along Parkview Place, which is in this general area in Lakeland Hills Boulevard, which runs north and south. So, the subject property is 0.88 acres, and it is, it consists of multiple parcels that are all part of this. That is the 301 through 319 East Lane. The property is part of the former, former Lakeland Hills Boulevard, or Lakeland Hills Residential Subdivision, excuse me. It was acquired largely by the CRA and Lakeland Regional Health in, beginning in the early 2000s. It is important to note that that residential subdivision is no longer used for residential purposes. There are no longer any residential lots that exist today. It is all vacant parking or medical office uses. The subject property is also located within the Midtown CRA's Medical District, which is intended for future redevelopment for medical office and support uses. This is the view of the subject property, looking south from the Lakeland Regional Team Parking Area or East Lane. This is a view looking at the, at the subject property, looking southeast from that same Again, this is a subject property, looking at it from the, looking east from west off of Morel Drive. This is looking at the Lakeland Regional Medical Center, which is to the south of this across Parkview Place. And this is a view to the north and to the northeast, which shows you the team parking or staff parking areas. It is important to note that those areas are still zoned RA4. However, they were approved for conditional use in 2014 for the purpose of parking in the interim until a, the, the property could be redeveloped for medical office or other And this is the location, again, of the subject property. They are looking to expand that existing building in this general area. I will turn it over to the applicants if they have anything to add.
Good morning, Commissioner. For the record, Bart Allen, I'm a lead use attorney with Peterson and Myers Law Firm. My address is 225 East Lemon Street, Lakeland, Florida. Happy to be here this morning on behalf of Lakeland Regional. This is a, what a relatively small zoning change, and Ms. McGuire gave you a lot of the extremely pertinent evidence, testimony and evidence. This is Regional Activity Center. We are, well, and as I'll show you on this map, as you can see on the left, currently, the existing building and the portion of the parking is O1, but the portions to the north are currently is RA4 and residential, and that's, and that's been the case for some time. And the blue is the entire ownership for this particular piece of Lakeland Regional. What we're asking to do is basically take all the RA4 on this side and turn it into O1. And the reason behind that is, I'm sure you've seen Lakeland Regional's been making some investments throughout the county, throughout our community, to enhance their, the services that they're providing to the community. This is another one of those. They're going to be renovating what is the Morel Internal Medicine Clinic now, and as part of that renovation for their GME program, they're, they require a 3,000-square-foot expansion of the existing structure to the north. It's bringing that 3,000 square feet out of the O1 into the RA4, which is what is triggering this zoning change. So, this, oh, that's the wrong button. As you can see on this slide, this is the existing structure, and the zoning line is basically on the north, north end of that building, and so now- And so, now we're expanding 3,000 square feet north, and that requires a zoning change. This is allowing us an extra 18 medical stations within this structure that will be primarily utilized by the GME program. And this is a future layout of how this building will look after. So, with that, this is a fairly, again, a fairly small change. We'll be utilizing the existing infrastructure, stormwater ponds, accesses, parking, et cetera, for this. So, with that, we'll stand for any additional questions that there may be. Otherwise, we request favorable vote and recommendation of the city council. Thank you.
The questions, comments from the board?
What would be the primary access road?
There's access off of East Lane. The access is going to remain the same. So, you can see, again, I keep clicking the wrong button. The access is right here off of East Lane. So, you'll come in off Parkview into Morel and then into East Lane and come in just like you do today. Although there are a number of pedestrian crossings and connections as it relates to staff and getting to the main campus of the hospital, et cetera. And that'll stay in place as well.
Other questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Do we receive any calls or emails?
We did not receive any comments from the public. I will also note that this request is consistent with the medical district, for the CRA's medical district, is also consistent with the character and land use patterns in the generalized area.
I have a staff reporting your packet here. This one, we did place an agenda for a final decision. We did not perceive it as being particularly controversial. So, we would ask for you to vote for Dave for approval.
Do we want to go over any conditions or anything else?
It's conditional zoning, so there would be no conditions. They'll just go through site plan review when they're ready to start building here.
I'll entertain any motions.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Onto the general meeting. And item three, review the minutes of the June meeting.
Everyone's had a chance to review the minutes. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move, we accept the minutes as presented?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Okay, item four, minor modification of PUD, Plan Unit Development Zoning for Lakeland Interstate Business Park to update the list of permitted uses and adopt new performance standards on approximately 7.25 acres located at 2425 Interstate Drive. Owner L. L. Por LLC, applicant Daniel Lewis, and this is continued from the previous meeting.
Good morning. For the record, Todd Vargo with Community and Economic Development. Excuse me, I wasn't here last month, so Damaris was kind enough to present this for me. So, I think you've gone over a lot of this before. This is 2425 Interstate Drive is the address. It's this property that kind of on the inside of this curve of Interstate Drive. Here's I4. Interstate Drive runs from Kathleen Road on the south end up to Providence Road on the north end. And this is the area that is in question for the minor modification. Wanted to real quick, although I wasn't here, I was able to watch courtesy of Lakeland Government Television, the hearing last month. And it seemed there may, maybe I should have included this in the slideshow that I gave to Damaris. My fault, Damaris, sorry about that. This is a rendition or elevation of what this is going to look like. You can see these are small offices. I think the testimony last month was like 600 to 900 square feet. Small spaces for professional offices, contractors, some warehousing perhaps, flex space. That's what they're looking to do is flex space. So, I also wanted to, early in my presentation this month, show the site plan. And there's been some changes to this site plan that I want to talk about real quick. One of the concerns brought about last month, I think by both the Planning and Zoning Board and the residents, was the location of the trailer parking, or I should say the work trailer parking, because we are not talking about tractor trailers in, with these small office spaces. So, we worked with the applicant, and they were able to shift buildings one and two here, these are the vertical buildings, to the north and put the work trailer parking down here. You can see it outlined with a blue circle. And then there's another small area of work trailer parking for this building three up This keeps that trailer parking away from the residents. I think the concern was that it was going to be back here behind this building. I think this is a good solution for all. There'll be an eight-foot opaque fence blocking the view of this trailer parking from people heading north on Interstate Drive. And an eight-foot opaque fence blocking the view of this trailer parking from the people on Alameda Drive North until this buffer can get established, which we'll talk about in a second. Okay, so this, I think you saw the slide last month. This is looking south-southwest from the Integrated Supply Company parking lot, and this is looking down towards the subject site. Oops. Why did that do that? Down towards the subject site, which is this whole area here. And then these are the houses that are on the north side of Alameda Drive North. The cul-de-sac for Alameda Drive North would be over here somewhere. You can tell and you can see that these, this buffer, pine trees maybe not the best choice 30 years ago when they started this industrial park. Pine tree is perfectly fine when they're young, but as they grow older, you can see they drop their bottom limbs. Effectively, they block about as much as a matchstick does. So, this was taken about two weeks ago. Mr. Barby and I went out to the site with our city arborist. And certainly, yeah, a lot can be done to improve this buffer. And I'm calling it the northern landscape buffer just because it's on the north of Alameda Drive and the residents there. And our city arborist came up with some ideas on how to improve this buffer. A combination of two or more of the species below will enhance the buffers in question. They can be planted beneath the existing slash pines. Of course, irrigation will be needed to establish plants for one year. But these plants were made to flesh out that area between the pines and the fence. So, we've got southern red cedar, wax myrtle, cabbage palms, and viburnum. You know, of course, they'll have to grow to that point because the applicant is also, and I'll show you this on another coming slide, the applicant has also agreed to replace that six-foot fence that we can see here in the picture with an eight-foot fence along their property lines, the adjoining property lines. So, the residents will get an eight-foot fence and will work to, again, to more fully make that buffer more lush and block some of their views for them. This is taken from the Land Rover parking lot. That first slot I showed you was taken from over here. This is that industrial building where I was standing looking northeast. So, this is, and this is the eastern buffer on the site. There's a couple of trees in the way. But this eastern buffer doesn't seem to be a problem. Again, this is looking south from the Land Rover parking lot, it kind of just pivoted. And this is an industrial laundry facility that abuts the subject site on the south portion. And again, this eastern buffer is pretty lush. There's not a lot of, it's not a lot of gaps in there. This picture is actually taken from that industrial laundry facility looking north. Here's the Land Rover building. And then here's that eastern buffer. Again, you can see they didn't have the problem with, you know, there's some slash pines in there, but there's some other things in there too, of course, that's creating that visual obstruction that we all like to see when we talk about landscape buffers. It seems to be that somebody probably was mowing this and clearing this out, you know, and that's why that mid-range stuff never established in this buffer with the slash pines, again, to the detriment of those people along Alameda Drive North. Okay, so here's another door. This is during our walk again. This is looking southward at that eastern landscape buffer. So, the industrial laundry facility is still over here somewhere. And again, you can see this has plenty of that mid-range foliage that's going to block out views for anybody. Again, wanted to put up the site plan real quick.
You, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you, you just had the slide with the buffers. Can you go back to the slide you just had on? And, no, the one forward, forward.
Forward, sorry, the one I...
Yeah, the next one.
The next one. And then show us with your pointer where those larger buffers are in relationship to what we're looking at right now.
Sure. So, the one I called the northern buffer, which was with just the pines, the one that was very sparse and needed to be enhanced with the suggested plantings from our city arborist, is this up here? Yeah. And this, I think, was what most of the objections were from those people along north Alameda because that's right here.
Let's call them residents.
Yeah. The eastern buffer that I showed that was, again, pretty lush and thick and view blockage is against, is this. This long buffer right here.
And is there a fence there or no? There's just landscaping?
There is a fence, yeah. Again, there's a six-foot fence. The applicant has stated that they will turn that into an eight-foot fence, so...
At ground level, you can't see, you can't see through the vegetation on that eastern-facing.
Right, because it was unclear whether the fence went all the way around. You could see it through the pines, but you couldn't see it through the other landscaping, so...
It does. So, anyway, yeah, so there's the site plan again. Again, this is the buffer up here that needs some help. And we're, again, we've employed the city arborist to give us some ideas of plantings that will help in a short amount of time. Pretty much covered everything I think I wanted to. I think staff feels we've been very receptive to the comments from last month, and we've worked with the applicant to provide solutions that are best for everyone. If there are any questions from the board? Sure.
I may have misunderstood in the beginning. You were suggesting that with the replacement of the six-foot fence with the eight-foot fence and the natural buffering bordering the Alameda section, that at some point, once that vegetation matured, that fence would be removed?
Oh, I'm sorry. If I said that, I misspoke. No, the fence will remain. The six-foot fence is going to be replaced with an eight-foot fence, but that eight-foot fence will stay. Yeah, my apologies if I suggested that.
Several questions before we go through the conditions. Okay, is the fence going to be low-maintenance PVC? Is it going to be made out of wood that will deteriorate after a certain amount of time?
I think we specify an opaque fence.
Doesn't tell me what it's made out of, though.
Generally, the code typically leaves it up to developer. Most of them will choose a low-maintenance material like PVC. Wood would be more of a residential material. You really don't very often see it used for industrial or commercial-type projects.
The landscaping buffer would also, when you meet with the arborist, will be done, you know, I'm assuming it would be chosen to have fast-growing and lower maintenance because I know cabbage palms are, they will drop their fronds, they're messy. So, some of those, you know, I mean, just be conscious of how fast it grows and who's going to maintain those.
And the intent, and talking with the arborist is that there's going to be probably a six-month establishment period, and then once that passes, then the plant material, the intent is to have a Florida-friendly palette of a material out there that would not require, you know, irrigation or at least minimal irrigation, so they would be able to grow kind of as you would expect. So, they're probably going to be relatively fast-growing, but the intent is it's the long-term minimal maintenance and something that's going to have some longevity.
More question. The first slide that you presented with the, what it was supposed to look like, I'm assuming that's what's facing Interstate or Kathleen Road? Or is that also going to be what it's going to look like in the very rear of the property? The same sort of setup?
So, my understanding is this is what will face Interstate Drive, because you can see the sidewalk here, which will be along Interstate Drive. So, this is what vehicles coming down Interstate Drive will see.
And I guess my question was with the last slide with, go to the last slide. Sorry. That one. So, that long row going this way along the longest buffer, is that going to be similar-looking?
For the record, the applicants are saying yes.
If you recall, last month, they mentioned that side of the project, that would be the customer service kind of, those will be effectively like storefronts. And between the two buildings, that's where you'll have the kind of the, any garage doors and any type of loading, unloading areas. So, that'll all be showed internally between the two buildings. So, that will just be parking for employees and customers that are on the back, like a typical office park type.
There like a noise ordinance or decibel level for things that might happen there?
So, this PUD actually has a lot of performance standards in it when they, again, when it was established about 30 years ago. There is a section J, Performance Standards, and J1 talks about noise. And it says, "Every use shall be so operated as to comply with a maximum performance standards governing noise below. Objectional noises due to intermittence, heat, frequency, or shrillness shall be so muffled or eliminated so as not to become a nuisance to adjacent uses. Sound levels may be measured at any point on the property line on which the use is located with a sound level meter and associated octave bank filter manufactured according to standards prescribed by the American Standards Association." And I can show this to you, might be easier. But there's a table here about the frequency of cycles per second, the maximum noise levels along property line abutting a residential district, and along property line abutting a commercial-industrial district. So, there's some, you know, there are some standards in the PUD that address that. I think, again, based on the adjacent residential that was there before this, the framers of this PUD thought about that.
That was always an issue going back to the original, development of the original PUD, noise was one of the big, was one of the big issues. And so, that would be certainly carried forward with these recommendations, and the uses that we're talking about are all consistent with that in support of those performance standards.
I think we have a condition that says that, too, that this PUD amendment is going to have to meet these, the overall PUD requirements. But in addition to noise, some of the other performance standards are for vibration, smoke, dust, and dirt, toxic matter, fire and explosive hazards amongst others. So, again, they, I think they really did think about that, about, you know, when this was established.
If anything were to come up, it would go to code enforcement, and they would have a document to attribute their... Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Any other questions from the board? I'm going to go ahead then, and so I only can, so the, again, the PUD, as established 30 years ago, has many, many, many sections to it. I've only included here the ones where we are adding or deleting something. So under permitted uses, under the service type of permitted uses, we're adding the, any type of heavy equipment, heavy machinery, or vehicle repair and service use. However, that has an asterisk by it, and the asterisk says, "These uses are not permitted on lots or parcels adjacent to residentially zoned areas," which would be this PUD. The subject of this minor modification because it does abut the residentially zoned area. Number six, and this gets specific to, again, this minor modification. Uses specific to lots five through seven. In addition to the above uses, the following uses shall be permitted on a portion of lots five through seven, as described in Exhibits B1 and B2, provided that all activities occur inside an enclosed building. A, industrial-type service establishments, Level 1. B, industrial uses, Level 1. C, in addition to the performance standards specified in Section J, those are the ones I talked about. All uses on lots five through seven shall be subject to the following restrictions. I, no outdoor storage of warehouse, wholesale trail goods, and equipment, building materials, scrap, chemical containers, or other materials. I'll say two. I said I, but we'll go with two. No automotive, recreational vehicle, or mobile home service and repair-related uses. Three, no recycling or waste collection uses. Four, no outdoor manufacturing. Five, no uses requiring outdoor cutting of tile, stone, or granite or other construction materials. Six, no uses requiring the use of an incinerator. Seven, no propane gas filling or storage. Eight, no bulk storage of any hazardous materials as defined under NFPA 400 Hazardous Materials Code. Nine, no bulk storage of any flammable or combustible liquids as defined by NFPA 30 Flammable and Combustible Liquids Code. Ten, no household mini-storage or vehicular storage. Work trucks and vans for tenants may be parked overnight in designated parking spaces on the site. Work trailers for tenants shall only be parked in designated spaces as shown on the site plan. And those were those two areas outlined in blue I showed you on the site plan. At the time of site plan review, the buffer adjacent to lots five through seven, as described in Exhibits B1 and B2, shall be updated to meet the minimum requirements for a Type C buffer specified in Figure 4.5-9 and Table 4.5-3 of the Land Development Code and Exhibit B-3. Any existing mature trees within the buffer, which are determined by the city arborist to be either in poor health or represent a hazard to adjacent property owners, shall be removed and replaced with appropriate tree plantings. And again, this is where we're going to be looking for those types of plants recommended by the city arborist to fill out that Type C buffer. This is Exhibit B3, and right here, you see the existing fence to be replaced with eight-foot opaque fencing. And this is that 40-foot buffer section. And then here's the site plan, Exhibit B4.
Is the plan to remove all of the pine trees or just the ones that are of poor health?
Just the ones of poor health, if there are any. But no, those pine trees can stay. I think, yep, I think that's it.
Binding site plan?
Do it up and into the PUD, so we do reference in the conditions, so that condition will be binding.
Any questions on the conditions as presented? Do we have the applicant, and do they agree with the conditions as presented?
Hi, Lee Saunders again, 5529 U.S. Highway 98 North, Lakeland, Florida. I represent both the property owner, LL Poor LLC, and the applicant, and the potential buyer who is here with me today. We've got Dan Lewis with RPM, and we have George and Patrick Kelly. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for allowing us the time to make the recommended changes. I think that I really have to thank staff. We've had both Todd, we've had Matthew and Chuck. They've worked with us hand-in-hand, given us some fantastic recommendations to make sure that we address both the concerns of the board and the concerns of the adjacent property owners. The increased buffer over and above what was called for in the original PUD, I think, will do just tons to accent what is there and to make it much better than what is currently there. I can understand some of the concerns from the residents, going from that six-foot fence to the eight-foot fence, adding an additional buffering as suggested by the arborist. I think there was four choices. We have to pick at least two of those, so we'll definitely address that. Board Member Knight, to make sure that we're getting something there that's both Florida-friendly, easy escape, and doesn't require a ton of maintenance. Also wanted to just, again, go over the fact that maybe the last time it got a little off the rails, but at the end of the day, what we're asking for is basically a clarification of some archaic language in a PUD that was 30-plus years old. It mentions stuff in the original one, and I don't want to bore anybody because Todd's done a fantastic job, but it mentions photographic studios, which probably there's not going to be any of those anymore. And actually, under the current land use allows a crematorium. With the changes that are proposed, that will be taken off of the market. I don't think anybody wants that adjacent to residential. So a lot of the problems that were there are going to be addressed and taken care of. If there's any other questions that I can answer, I've got Dan here who helped do the initial application. Yes, I'm sorry.
Are the residents aware of these changes?
They are. They have been notified, and I believe even the Kellys have spoken to some of them. I don't want to talk out of turn, but I believe all of their issues have been addressed.
We did receive one email late yesterday afternoon from a Ms. Barbara Deacon. She's the managing agent for Lakeland Interstate Business Park. I'll go ahead and pass this out. And this is, I guess, regards to their covenants, conditions, restrictions for Lakeland Interstate Business Park as it pertains to their approvals by their Internal Architectural Control Committee. They are asking for a one-month continuance to, I guess, review the changes here. However, we recommend that you approve today. We do not believe this would be sufficient reason to delay the request. Their covenants will still be applicable, and they will have the opportunity to review the project as it moves forward through the site plan and development review process. So, but we didn't want to make you aware of this communication, which came in late yesterday.
I'd like to address the board on that also. I can show you an email where, beginning as early as the 27th of June, we put the Property Owners Association on note. I have a June 30th email where I emailed Ms. Deacon to explain to her and provided her with the changes that were proposed. I spoke to her on numerous occasions to explain to her what we were doing. There was concerns, according to her and according to the email that I can show you, about design standards for the building, none of which is what's proposed today, asking where the air conditioners were going to go, asking where the parking spaces were going to go and how many. Again, none of that is proposed in this language, minor language change to the PUD. All of that will be addressed in design and construction plans, and they will have full, multiple times to review that. I don't know if maybe Ms. Deacon didn't fully understand what we were doing, even though I tried to explain it to her multiple times, but I'd be happy to show you the email where we did put them on notice on more than one occasion, so, including talking to her yesterday morning. And there was no objection until, I think, the email came in at 3:50. So I can't speak any further to that other than we did notify, noted them on multiple occasions. And none of what we're asking for today will diminish any of the rights under the CCNRs.
Only thing that I would add for the city and for the developer is, once, you know, the fence is put in, the buffers are being worked on, that you guys take an extra step to contact those residents and let them know what's going on, whether it's by a letter or an email or a phone or just walking the property. That's just me.
Well, they should know when the fence is going to be torn down in their backyard and things like that. I would agree with that.
Like with the timeline, you know.
I'm sure we can do that. I don't think that's any problem. We can notice everybody that's involved, just like what, when there's a proposed change, that we can notice anybody within a so-many-foot residence or anybody that touches the property actively. I think that's a very valid consideration and easily done.
Is something that you all would do as the applicant?
Yeah, I'm sure we can work with the Kellys.
Reasonable communication with the residents is in order to replace the fence.
And just for the record, you all concur with the conditions as they were presented?
Do.
Okay. Thank you.
We, again, appreciate all the help, the staff, that they've been extremely helpful with helping us get to where we are today. We very much appreciate their help. Is there any other questions?
Any other questions from the applicant?
Thank you all very much.
Time all entertaining, any motions?
Make a motion with the way of stuff that changes was presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Major modification of PUD planned unit development zoning to allow for the development of a new two-story, 8,000-square-foot office building on property located at 1301 Grasslands Boulevard. Owner, 1301 Grasslands LLC. Applicant, Thomas Woodridge, TDW Land Planning, Inc.
Good morning. Again, for the record, Todd Vargo with Community and Economic Development. Again, I wasn't here last month when the public hearing for this occurred, so I'm going to go ahead and give you, I'm going to go ahead and start my presentation. So 1301 Grasslands Boulevard is the subject site. This is the old Grasslands leasing office that has since been converted to office uses. It's approximately 2.9 acres in area, so the south, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of Harden Boulevard and Grasslands Boulevard, south of the Azalea Park Retirement Community. The subject property originally developed by the Drummond Company as a sales office for Grasslands Residential Community in the 1990s, is currently improved with a one-story, 11,090-square-foot office building, has a future land use designation of residential high, and is owned PUD as part of Area A of Ordinance Number 3432. That's the PUD. The subject property is also located in the Oak Bridge Development of Regional Impact. The current PUD allows for the 11,090 square foot of, even though it's developed as offices, it actually allows for C2 commercial uses, which is our most intensive commercial use with a highway commercial, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit. The PUD also includes, again, the two properties to the north, which is the adult congregate living facility, the Azalea Park Senior Living Community, and a two-story self-storage facility that was approved, I think, earlier this year, approved by the City Commission on April 3, 2023. The purpose of this request is to allow for the construction of a new 8,000-square-foot two-story office building in the northeast corner of the subject site, kind of adjacent to Harden Boulevard. It's right here. A site development plan showing the existing building footprint, the proposed office building, and off-street parking, internal driveways is all, you can see right here on the screen. The proposed two-story office building will be set back 50 feet from Harden Boulevard and 10 feet from the north parcel boundary. So 50 feet from Harden Boulevard, 10 feet from here. To accommodate the new office building, the site will be reconfigured to add off-street parking spaces. Vehicle access will remain right here from Grasslands Boulevard. There's an access road that runs north up to Azalea Park, and then the only way to access this property is right here from that access road. Again, I think I've got a good shot of it here. Oh, okay. So here is a color-coded slide with the new office building in blue and new parking areas, or at least revamped parking areas, in yellow. And I'm carrying that color scheme throughout the next couple of slides. Here's an elevation of the new office building from Harden Boulevard, and a new office building from the south. So, okay, so here's where we're carrying the color scheme over. This is that access road looking south towards Grasslands Boulevard. You can see the tree line, Grasslands Boulevard there. There'll be a new area of 16 parking spaces along here. This is looking east from that entrance road area over towards Harden Boulevard, and there will be, the blue area is the new 8,000-square-foot office building. There'll be some reconfiguring of these parking spaces into 16 spaces right here, and then some new parking, again, just south of that new building. This is looking from, there's a knoll on that, on the subject property. Again, here's the Azalea Park Senior Living. This is the proximate location of the building in blue. Yellow, these are those 16 spaces we just saw that are being reconfigured back by the entrance road. And again, there'll be 10 parking spaces here. Pivoting to the left, oh, no, sorry, pivoting to the right, looking north more, again, the Azalea Park Senior Community, the location of the new 8,000-square-foot office building, Harden Boulevard over here. Now pivoting to the left, back towards the existing parking. You know, I guess when this was a leasing office, you know, they kind of decided to put the circle in and put the parking around the circle. Very nice, aesthetically pleasing. This is the current site plan. I want to talk real quick about the uses allowed in this PUD currently. I touched on it earlier. The current, currently, the PUD allows C2 uses, which, again, is our highway commercial, the most intensive commercial district we have. Some of those uses include very high-turnover restaurants, so fast-food restaurants with drive-through facilities, convenience stores with motor vehicle fuel sales, bars, lounges, and liquor stores, pawn shops, payday loan and check cashing facilities, motor vehicle sales and service repair. I think we can all agree that at this corner of Grasslands Boulevard and Harden Boulevard, those uses just aren't compatible with this area. So as part of this PUD modification, we are asking to change the uses permitted on just this Area A from C2 uses to office uses, both medical and non-medical. This is what it's being used for now. That's what it's probably going to be used for in the future. With no direct access to Harden Boulevard, it's going to be hard to do any kind of commercial on here. And certainly, I'm sure the residents of Grasslands don't want a lot of commercial traffic going up Grasslands Boulevard, you know, and into the site, and I'm sure the senior living facility wouldn't want that either. So again, back to the, back to the slide showing the new office, 8,000-square-foot office building, and some new parking areas. And then I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Where's the dumpster being relocated to? Because I know that, that's going, that placement of that office building, is that it right there?
Yeah, this is the new dumpster. The current dumpster is like right around here.
It's right, yeah, right there.
In one of the slides with the fancy colorations, there's a concrete bat on the left. What is that?
That's the dumpster.
It's the dumpster. Yeah, that's the dumpster enclosure.
There's an enclosure around it, yeah.
Yeah, you might, yeah.
If they move it to the back, they'll still, they'll still put an enclosure on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Part of the code.
A couple of questions. Office building.
Looking towards the applicant, any idea how many offices are gonna be in the 8,000-square-foot building?
Good morning. Tom Woodridge, TDW Land Planning. We haven't specked out the building entirely. We've spoken, the applicant and I have had numerous conversations with the client and an architect to determine what the build-out could possibly be. We're right now making it a flexible space that could allow for up to two tenants on the bottom floor and two on the top. We were hoping to have kind of a overall design that unified it for possibly one tenant on top and one tenant on the bottom, and a conference space, but we're still working through those details at this time.
Won't be offices doesn't seem to generate a lot of visitors as far as clients or customers. Because the parking spaces that are there now are fine, but if it's something that would generate a lot of traffic, I don't think there's sufficient parking. The only other question I have, I guess, on behalf of the Postal Service, what are you gonna do with two addresses of 1301 Grasslands? Because that current building has an address of 1301 Grasslands, I think.
We'll have to be applying for the appropriate addressing of the building, yeah.
A pie for site plan, building perimeter view, don't have a new address assigned just to that?
Right now, they're called Building 100 and Building 200. It could be they carry that forward, because I used to have office space in one of the buildings.
I wanted to, real quickly, parking is something we take very seriously, and we did consider. And with the reconfiguration of the spaces here, because again, they're gonna be losing some, but then they're adding 16, they're adding 16 here, and I think 10 along here, they should have sufficient parking. Yeah, we definitely checked that.
Overall, they're adding 31 spaces, so go from 51 to 82.
I did want to mention that we didn't receive any comments or anything from the public. I think I might have gotten a phone call, somebody just asking what it was, but nobody opposed or anything. So I'm gonna go ahead and go through the conditions, if that's all right. Area A, Commercial and Retirement Residential, permitted uses, we're striking, again, the C2 zoning district classification and adding office uses, medical and non-medical. And then what it originally said, group homes, level three, and a 94,000-square-foot mini warehouse slash self-storage facility. Maximum floor area and density, again, scratching or striking out anything having to do with the C2 commercial uses and adding office uses of 19,090 square foot. Again, that's the existing 11,090-square-foot building that's on there now, plus the 8,000-two-story square foot that's proposed to be added. Three maximum building height, we're adding letter C. Office uses, medical and non-medical, will be limited to two stories. Minimum setbacks, changing up B, parking or internal drives 10 feet from public right-of-way or internal property lines, we're scratching the other perimeter property lines. Transportation improvements, E and American with Disabilities Act, ADA-compliant pedestrian route shall be constructed from the mini warehouse self-storage building entrance to the sidewalk located along the Harden Boulevard frontage. An ADA-compliant pedestrian route shall be provided between the two office buildings on the former Grassland Sales Office Site, which shall be connected to the existing Grasslands Boulevard frontage sidewalk. And then site plan, because we're adding another exhibit, we've added Exhibit F4 to that list. Development shall be in accordance with the site development plan included as Exhibits F1 and F4. And with approval of the Director of Community and Economic Development, because we underwent a name change since that original PUD was approved, minor adjustments may be made at this time of site plan review without requiring a change to this PUD. And so there's the Exhibit F, which doesn't reflect the change to the mini warehouse building on the north property line, so we're just axing that out. And here's F4. Again, you've seen this, this is the proposed site plan for the new office building.
Comments from the board with regards to the conditions? Condition number five, it looked like there was a modification for ADA access from the mini warehouse storage. What, is that a part of this?
That was because the way it was structured before, it was really geared more towards the mini warehouse. And so we want to clarify for both this building and the mini warehouse. And so that, that's why that change is shown the way that it is.
No comments, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead, applicant?
Thank you. I just had a few questions about the conditions. So, again, Tom Woodridge. There's not a slot there, sorry. Fool me once, right? Tom Woodridge, TDW Land Planning. Just a couple of quick questions about the conditions. As I look through them, just for clarification, on 4B about the parking internal driveways, we have shown, there's a 10-foot requirement from internal property lines. Our parking spaces that were proposed along that northern edge of our property, maybe within that 10 feet, I think they are, and so it says parking or internal drives. We don't want to be in violation of that, but our parking lot that's running along the north boundary, we believe is within that, I think it's within five, about five feet from that property line, so.
Same parking lot, is it within five feet? Is that what you're saying?
The proposed parking lot, maybe talking flip back to show the site plan, please. So the parking on the top of the screen, there you go. Actually, if the parking spaces are just outside it, we may be okay, but that little hump that comes back so you can back out of the parking spaces, that's an internal drive. Just want to make sure that.
That would just be for vehicles backing out, so I don't think that'll be an issue. The spaces are clearly, they're outside the 10-foot setback based on the site plan you provided.
Yeah.
Good. Just want to make sure that we've, we're working with staff so far, didn't come, so we thought so. The other question I had was, on letter E, the question that was brought up by Commissioner Locke was relative to what we were wondering too. The change for us, I think, is in the second sentence, an ADA-compliant pedestrian route shall be provided between the two office buildings on the former Grasslands Office Site, which shall be connected to the existing Grasslands Boulevard frontage sidewalk. Is that directed towards, it says the two buildings?
There's already, there's already an ADA-compliant route between Grasslands Boulevard and the first building, and so it's carrying that on to this building.
Not to the sidewalk that runs along Harden Boulevard?
Correct, because that one has a pretty substantial swell.
It does, that was my point.
Yeah, same here, Jerry.
And so the intent here is, is by going to Grasslands Boulevard, that gets you to the signal and the signalized crosswalk, and so that achieves all the, everything that we'd be looking for.
So in the, on the site plan, we'll be coming back from our proposed building on the northeast corner, having some way, you say we have the sidewalks in front of the building, some way to traverse across to the system that is currently on-site, I suppose. Our connection is down there on the south building, the office building through the trees, to the Harden Boulevard sidewalk. And that's the nearest point to the Grasslands Boulevard sidewalk. So I think what you're saying, Chuck, is that we just have to provide some way to traverse from our two buildings to that point?
Exactly, exactly. And as long as there's connectivity between the existing buildings and grasslands, which there appears to be, then that shouldn't be an issue.
What we've shown here seems to be consistent.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And I mean, procedurally, I mean, I don't know if it's formy, but with the change in the first sentence in letter E that affects the mini storage warehouse connection, that doesn't affect us in any way, that we would have to provide that, because it goes through two sites to the north as well.
That was a previously existing condition in the PUD, because it was written for the mini storage. And so the intent here is to clarify that that was why that condition was in there originally to begin with. So we're clarifying that in the first part of the condition, and in the second, the second part of E, we're specifically talking about this particular project and the connection to Grasslands Boulevard.
So since that connection is not currently in place, who's held responsible for employing that or putting that in place?
Because it's in the same, the same PUD, that would be the mini warehouse's responsibility. For the, for the mini warehouse.
Sounds like this was established for them, and then this is just another added transportation improvement commitment. So we're just clarifying that it's, yeah, I was confused by it as well.
Yeah, me too, because I thought, well, they're not present, and they weren't notified, and so they're having something that affects them. They already had it.
They already, they already had it because of, you know, good or bad, it's all in the same PUD. And so what we have to do is write the document, you know, anticipating the different uses coming in at different times. And so that was the intent of that revision.
Thank you very much, everyone. Any questions for me while I'm up here?
So you concur with the conditions as presented?
Yes, thank you for clarification, staff and commissioners. I appreciate your questions and clarification. That's all I have.
With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I was just gonna say, Mr. Phillips, and could you please speak into the microphone so we can get that on the record at least?
Yes, I move that we accept the request of the applicant, subject to the conditions of which he is approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item six, plat approval for the Lakeland Central Park Phase One on 724.15 acres, generally located north and east of the Pope Parkway, west of Airport Road, and south of Old Tampa Highway. Owner, LCP, owner LLC. Applicant, Dave Schmidt Engineering, Incorporated.
Morning again. Philip Scarish, Principal Planner with Community and Economic Development, for the record. Yeah, so we have two plaspy this morning. This first one is an industrial plat, Lakeland Central Park. You've seen it many times in the last couple of years with modifications. So the site is located here at Old Tampa Highway and this, Pope Parkway. This is this large area here, again, it's 724 acres. So the plat itself, the plat page itself is showing that entire 724 acres. But the affected area is approximately 349 acres, which is this area here within it. And what it does, it contains three development lots. Yeah, here's the 349 acres are, again, our great GIS staff kind of mapped that out for us. So this is the first page of the plat. And yes, so here is Phase One of Lakeland Central Park. Again, this whole area is the 724 acres. This area that's really affected, which is this area that snakes in and around here, 350 acres. We have three industrial lots. This is Lot One, Lot Two, which Lot Two has been developed. And then we have Lot Three, which you can kind of see off the Parkway, and I said raised, raised floor. The foundation, excuse me, yeah, you can see that kind of off the Parkway. The remaining acreage of the plat is gonna be all these tracks that relate to isolated wetlands and drainage. So it's a large site, and so the majority of the work that's been going on there was getting the drainage and everything connected to make sure it meets, you know, Southwest Florida Water Management District and FEMA standards. We have a road. We have, the plat includes the dedication of the Winston Park Boulevard to this point here, which will be how the cul-de-sac ending. And one day in the future, yeah, when we do, when they do Phase Two, it'll punch out to Airport Road there. Again, the three lots in question, total about 77 acres. That was mentioned in your staff report, 77 acres. It's the affected area that was 350. So construction has proceeded to the point where we can bring this plat to you and recommend approval that it meets the state statutes for plating. There will be some minor adjustments made to this once we receive the ASBILTS. And utility, and the utility easements will be updated based on those ASBILTS. But this is the proposed plat we have before you. Again, moving parts, and then when we're ready to get this recorded, Mr. Locke, I'll find you and get your signature, and we'll take this to be recorded. But we're at a point now in the construction where we can go ahead and get this board's approval of the Phase One plat.
Comments from the board? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Phase One plat is presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Item seven, plat approval for Hawthorne Phase One, 183-lot residential subdivision on 69.39 acres, generally located south of West Pipkin Road, north of Yule Road, and west of Busy Bee Lane. Owner, Four Star USA Real Estate Group. Applicant, Duberry Engineers, Incorporated.
Again, for the record, Philip Scarish, yeah, we have a residential plat for you. Phase One of Hawthorne Ranch, 183-lot subdivision, and the affected area is 69.39 acres. Again, the construction of Phase One and the improvements, the roads, utilities, have come to a point where we can, we can come to the Planning and Zoning Board for, get your approval for the Phase One plat. Again, the location is out here on West Pipkin Road. It's just west of the Riverstone and Town Park. You see, you have Town Park here, you have Riverstone, and then you have, we have Hawthorne Ranch. It's on the south side of Pipkin Road, and then Morgan Creek would be to the north. We're familiar with West Pipkin. So this is the affected area of Phase One. Again, 183 lots. This is the first phase. The PUD allows various sizes of lots. This phase, 183 lots, get broken down into 71 40-foot wide lots, 40-foot by 120, 87 50 by 120, and then 60, then 25, excuse me, 25 60 by 120 lots, for that total of 183 single-family lots. So overall, this is the plat. It's being recorded here, the Entrance Boulevard in the Spine Road, and that will eventually connect over to Riverstone. But again, this is the first phase here, and just have a couple, yeah, I just left it. There's more pages. I didn't want to give you show every single plat page, but this gives you the overall feel of what's being approved here. And again, once this goes through and has, you know, they've finished the construction, they're just about finished. We're going through inspections right now. Once it's been inspected, the utilities, the lift station, everything's been inspected, and we're ready to go. I'll go ahead and have the developer make the mileage and everything, and then we'll get everybody's signature, then we'll go ahead and record. But we're, again, we're at that point where, come to you for your approval. So stand for approval of this 183-lot plat.
Have one question. Have we contacted or had any contact from the Pope County regarding schools in this area?
We do for every residential project. We require a finding of adequate capacity from the school district. And so for every phase that comes through, including this, we get a confirmation that, you know, if a letter hasn't been done, we get a letter. If a letter has been prepared, submitted, and it's a couple of years old, we ask for reaffirmation that it's still valid. That's the case here. As the school district has said, their determination is still valid for this project. And so that is something that we definitely keep track of. It's part of our concurs determination process.
Well, okay, I understand George Jenkins High School. My thought, my understanding. My thought, my understanding is, is middle school, these kids are being bused from this general area up to Sleepy Hollow, is that correct?
That's my understanding of, of the students in, in Town Park.
Okay, what about elementary school?
Elementary school, I, I believe that they are going to Southwest. I think they're going to Southwest in this area. Wagner is pretty close to capacity, and so I think the next available is, is Southwest Elementary.
Where's Southwest?
It's front behind Publix at South. And one of the things, the school district has been, you know, as far as they, they handle kind of the, the districts and transport, but they are looking at some rezoning, redistricting, however you want to call it, because they've got, you know, pretty much for every school that's nearing capacity or maybe overcapacity, there are a lot of schools that are operating way under capacity. And so they're trying to come up with a plan to rebalance that. And so that's part of, I think, their, their internal review at the school district.
This particular project here, just a little bit of history. I mean, the PUD was actually approved back in, I believe, January of 2007. So this one has been on the books for a very long time. We were surprised to get from how far we are to the current building boom that took place along than before it. But they are finally moving forward here after, you know, 16-plus years being on the books. So we are glad to see that something is finally happening out, out there.
Any questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the plat as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Item eight, overview of administrative adjustments approved from January to June.
The administrative adjustments are included in your packet. And, and so you can see everything that's laid out between January and, and June of this year. And so those are there for your reference.
Item nine, report of City Commission action on planning and zoning board recommendations, along with planning and transportation manager's report, or the Chuck Barby Show.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make this one quick. There really wasn't anything for the July 3rd or the July 17th City Commission meeting involving zoning or land use, which is very unusual. That, of course, will start to pick back up again. So we hit a little bit of a lull, so there's really nothing to report there. But we do want to express our sincere appreciation for Mr. Roberts and his service on the Planning and Zoning Board. This is his last meeting. He has been a huge asset for, for the board and, and staff. And so we very much appreciate your service and look forward to seeing you on the CRA board.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nothing, nothing else to add at this point.
Anything from the audience? All right, we'll call this one a turn.
Have a great week.